My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation, for all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That Lauren was Tim calling us this time phones off.
Since Paul's not here, we're gonna go on to public safety.
Yes, where is the chief?
He's up there.
Oh, there he is. We're talking about the vendor communications first. Is Sergeant Brochus here by any chance also? Okay, Chief, if you wanna step out here actually, please. So, I got an updated quote, slightly updated quote, from vendor communications for $10,342.50. I know Chief Peter was looking for an alternative at the request of Mayor.
I did.
And he went.
I reached out to a company that Hunter had recommended to who they go through their marts and stuff. He told me he'd be glad they come out, give me a call if we found time. Called him back a second time again, said he was busy, but he'd be able to give me a call. Never seen the only other place that I know that does radios is Radio Hospital. They were the ones who created this mess in the first place, so.
So, I guess up for discussion is should we have the chief keep trying with the first individual he mentions that he has not been in contact with too well? Or should we possibly have this up for a vote next Tuesday?
Can I speak on that? I did talk to Bruce today about my truck. He has tried to get the Marts authentication done, that's why he's tied up. He said he will get with you and come down and go over some stuff with you.
Maybe he's got a proposal before Tuesday's meeting.
That'd be ideal if we could.
I guess I got a question on that. What happens if, I mean, main reason why we're staying with this is because of the sheriff, right? Let's just say we get a new sheriff and they go to Marts. Let's say next year, then what do we do? We would probably need to go to Marts. We would've just spent 20 grand on a, you know, we've already moved fire EMS. I don't know, just to me, gotta look towards the future, there's a.
I understand it is $20,685, not $2,000.
How's Marts good for you, Hunter and Chief Walter? Have you guys had any problems with Marts?
I have, we have not had any issues.
Chief, I mean, I know you have more communication back and forth.
We've, we had to put repeaters in because we still have our bad spots like the other radios. So, I mean, if it wasn't for Bud Company and they're building their addition, I mean, we'd have paid, you know. How much were those a piece? Eight thousand?
Yeah. Bud got me bought as repeaters.
When you guys put your repeaters in, you guys no longer have that issue, right?
No.
There's our answer, right?
The issue's done, yeah.
So, Marts and these repeaters and issues.
That was my only issue. I didn't think we was gonna have to go to, you know, get repeaters and all that 'cause Marts were, you know, great. But they weren't, they still couldn't get through half our buildings and stuff like that. But with the repeater, thanks.
And the nice thing about the Marts system is, yes, we have to pay $5 a month for every portable and mobile. But the only thing we gotta do is just upkeep our radios.
Right. Well, one concern that I had is when he came to me and said, hey, we got $80,000 that we have to update. I mean, that's probably not an issue, right? I mean, that's.
No, 'cause we, all of our stuff's on.
There was, there was an alternative.
Yes, they was able to, now, if they do something 10 years down the road, yes, we will have to replace some of our radios.
Thank you.
To clarify, with the system we have now, is it Marts?
No.
What do we have now?
Digital.
BHF, you're running your day-to-day stuff, BHF, but the sheriff's running under.
Sheriff's under digital, we're on BHF.
So, we have to switch to something else?
Oh, no, we just gotta get to where we have some, hopefully, repeater will make it hit back 'cause we have dead spots here in the village that we just can't.
There's, there's two issues here. One, we have, we need repeaters. Two, Mr. Ingard's saying, why are we not using more runway across the board? That's the two issues with the rest of the Safety Service personnel.
Makes sense.
Dave doesn't wanna go there, Ingrid, right?
Well, we just won't be able to communicate with the other law enforcement because they don't, they're not on Marts. Like the fire department, they're all digital through the county, but the county doesn't have Marts on the law enforcement side.
So, the sheriff's department is not Marts?
No.
Sheriff's Department or any other police.
There you go.
And the sheriff was just re-elected last November, so he's got a few years until a change.
And even if you got a new sheriff, I'm just guessing, it would probably be years before they actually made the move 'cause of the funding it would take to get it, that ball rolling. 'Cause that's every department again.
Fill in a gap here, please. The repeaters would take a, what were you doing now? And that would make everything work.
Well, for a good example, like Country Squire and Out By Loves, at times can be a dead spot where we can call out and dispatch, can't hear, see other officers, can't hear us, especially with their portables. If we put a repeater of, or say the water tower down here at the park, alls that's gotta do is reach that repeater and that repeater will then send that signal here and vice versa, so it just bounces off and sends it to this drone, you know, further on. So, we should up the quality of our.
Which would cost us how much for those repeaters?
$20,000.
Okay.
Which is what Chief Walter and Hunter said, that theirs would've been 14.
Our's would've been 16 and.
I spent $40,000, is that, no, yes, forty-some thousand, forty thousand dollars to put six repeaters in. He's got two in his squad and I have four in my trucks. Four. I know the school policy or the high school.
But this'll be a cover-all, 'cause it's.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so, let's see if we can reach out to that individual and see if we can get the alternative price on that and we'll go from there.
And the alternative price of using some of it's not the thing of the sheriff's department. The other person, the other company, Bruce, I mean, who Bruce was. That is not what the sheriff's department used to do.
Not the Marts, no.
Okay.
But he can service our stuff.
Right, but it's not.
Right, but it's not Marts.
Okay.
We won't be able to communicate.
Okay.
Gotcha, okay, good.
Any other questions on that topic? Okay, we're going to stop right there for a minute and teach you here to follow.
Sorry, I'm late, everyone. So, I have been on the receiving end of dozens and dozens of public records requests. I've been working with Josh and trying to help respond to those. Josh has been working his tail off to get responses out to all of these requests. And this is my opinion, but I think his actions are taking away from his other obligations to this, to this village. Infrastructure matters, personnel matters, things of that nature that a village administrator is obligated to do. Yet, as I understand it, he's spending a significant amount of his time simply trying to keep up with the myriad public records requests. Responding to a public records request is not an easy task. And from everything I can tell, Josh is doing a fine job at it, but at the expense of other tasks that he could be doing for the benefit of the village. It is my suggestion that council consider creating a position that will be devoted to responding to public records requests. Whether that be full-time or part-time, that's not my decision. Well, actually, no, this is my decision, this is my recommendation or my suggestion. The council at least consider it. I think it would be best for the village if Josh was able to focus on the job of being the village administrator and the tasks, the many tasks that go along with that, if someone else was devoted to these public records requests. I told Josh I would come to the council and make that suggestion and council can do whatever it wants to do.
Josh, obviously, you've given us some thought there.
I have.
Well, there's some information requests that need to be fulfilled by law. And we need to get those filled, so.
The big thing that comes in is, is to respond to Mr. Scott's suggestion and.
How we pay for it?
We're more than fully staffed up here, more than fully staffed, more, right? We got more than we've ever had, so if we can't find one person to do it, that's, I know we've got time. We've got a code enforcement officer that maybe looking for a couple of extra hours, all right, saying that possibly. Don't wanna speak on his behalf, maybe he's not interested in this. And we've got Mason if we can utilize possibly. We're more than staffed. For us to go out and hire somebody else would be ridiculous, just wasting taxpayer money.
The chief and I have talked a little bit about maybe a reorganization of some sorts over there with dispatchers, but that's, that's the extent, I mean, we're trying to take care of turnover of the dispatchers. Maybe addressing that at the same time as addressing this. That's, but we haven't gotten much far further than this, some discussions, preliminary discussions.
Given that how many hours are given to public records requests?
I mean, I put in maybe an average hour a day, working day, and it probably needs, at first, for first six months, maybe two, three, four hours a day.
So, I think the way this whole thing transpired was Dave was overloaded and you jumped in and tried to help him, correct? I mean, that's kinda worked, am I right in saying that?
Well, I centralized.
You was overloaded, I remember the conversation, I was laid off from time I was up here and you couldn't get it. Josh, you came to me and said, hey, I will help him with this, I said, that would be wonderful. Then we came up with a plan to utilize our dispatcher over there who runs the facility. How's that, or runs our dispatch, how's that going?
She's handling a lot of the paper complaints as they came in, so.
Information, complaints or requests?
Not requests, I'm sorry, the information requests as they come in, she's handling the paper.
We are having issues with communication, I would like to get those requests when you guys are attracted. So, on this page, on my packet, I have a summary. There's been 68 total records requests since January 1st, that's about one request every two days. That does not include the ones that, again, I just talked about that are getting past my process, my structure that I'm setting up slowly, that needs work in 7:00 PM, just kind of makes things a little hard. But, so there's many, there's more than 68, so I'm just thinking about that. And these things can range from, hey, I want body cam footage to I want council, council meeting recordings for the last four months. And that takes a lot of time out of my day. I mean, just waiting for things to download takes time on that regard. Personnel files have to go through, have to redact those individually, one by one. Finances, I know Matt's had to deal with a few himself, as you can see also, two individuals there are responsible for 54 of those requests since January 1st, and they are wide-ranging and take up multiple emails. It's not just sending emails and just acknowledging, go from there, they're usually too broad, or then they amend, they address some sort of request and then it gets lost in the email and to find it again, they're applying law. And it gets very time-consuming, so.
Sure, I thought that, I thought that the, what was being overburdened to the community was the redaction.
Yes.
Because from what I understood, was once, once we handed out the redaction, filling the, the regular paper request was pretty simple. We can do that like that, that's what I've always been told. So, that's no longer the case. That's not, that's no longer the case or still the case?
Moving forward, yes.
That's moving forward, yes.
So.
Yes, well, I didn't get.
That's no longer the case, moving forward, we need to take care of the paperwork, easy.
Yes, so the backlog of body cam footage and redaction. So, our redactor, Mandy, Mr. Mandy, left, what, months ago? She kinda was the person doing all the redaction and we wanna handle the redaction inside the house to save taxpayer money. Just doing the redaction for the, for certain, sure they have in December, that, all that that happened cost $800 from one officer's body cam.
But we use forensic, right?
This is before, April 9th effective date, yes. So, going forward, yes, the body cam footage stuff will be, won't be coming into offer. Outside of inspections, inspections will still come in, we still have to pay for those, which still agree for the individual, which can be, again, very price-dependent on the amount of what.
Can you, can you, can you define for us what an inspection is?
Free inspection, and please jump in on this, Paul. According to Sunshine laws, basically, if an individual wants to inspect a record and not take it, not purchase it, they can do so free, but that footage still needs redacted for minors, blood, protecting police officers who may be doing.
Sure.
Labor work, et cetera, et cetera, right? So, redacts, please.
So, then the divers, or whoever's making these, a lot of the requests that it looks like.
And they do have.
Could say, rather than send them to me, I would like to come up and sit down and watch, and then we have to cover that cost.
And they have done that.
So, I didn't, I didn't know that. So, that's, that's bringing the information given to us that we cannot charge for that. Would we send that out, would we still send that out to forensics to redact that, or is that something?
We don't have software, but it's the ancient software that we've been using.
Can we find more affordable, or can we find software that will help us do that in a more efficient? Have we even looked?
Well, when I, when I was looking for software, it's very expensive.
To redact?
Yeah. But I'm not saying that that's the only ones that we can find, we can look further.
But also, even if we have all the software in the world, we have no one trained using our existing software. And, I mean, I could spend, I could do it, hours, hours of my time, I can devote towards it, but that would not be good for the village, I think. I could send Mason, but he, that would take time away from his responsibilities too. So, if we can get someone trained over there on the existing software, which is I think we're trying to get at, but Mandy's only one, and then I'm not even sure where we are with maybe another officer getting trained on that.
Does it have to be a police officer, right? I mean, that's, I mean, you've told me, no matter, it can be an employee, they just gotta go through the background,
through the VCI check, 'cause they're gonna be handling people's personal information, so we'd have to run it through VCI and get that.
In your opinion, how, how hard does it, does it seem that it would take to get somebody trained to do that?
Well, once I get into the system and learn it myself, I don't think it would be hard. It's just time delay based upon uploading.
Right, right, perfect, yeah, to learn it, yeah.
I don't think it's, those are the delays in the body cams. We can use forensics, but it's a costly arm and leg. And I, it's hard for me to bite that bullet and spend taxpayer money of thousands of dollars, even though I do have authorization. I spent 2,000 bucks on local forensics, raised off that one ordinance a couple of months ago. It's still hard for me to say, yeah, well, just spend this money on basically nothing.
Kind of what we're doing with a person, right? If you're hiring a person, I mean, you can look at forensics or the person who we're just gonna hire.
That's true, that's true. But, I mean, at a certain point, I mean, where's, where's that end? Where, what's, are we in the green, are we in the black, or it comes to that?
Dave, do you have anyone in your department that might be interested in stepping up to, to do this?
Well, I think any of them over there do it, some of them are, you know, I'd be, I don't know, I would say Larry, but.
Would they, would they be interested in taking on extra hours?
Well, I have dispatchers, I have dispatchers, questioning the full-time all the time, but they're not full-time positions, so.
So, you can't work them over or something? Their status will change.
And no offense to the dispatchers at all, but maybe they're not going to want to do public record requests also, or at least not the redaction part of it.
I wouldn't, as far as the redaction part, as of right now, I'd only be wanting to do it myself 'cause I gotta make sure that it's being properly redacted, so we don't have any slip up.
Now, the both have my time to help achieve that matter too, when I can, but.
Going back, tying things together, one of them being, which we've, I think, done a pretty good job of reminding ourselves to keep people cross-trained.
Yes.
If we had a couple of people, perhaps even three, here in the front, in this office, would that even be realistic to think about?
For records requests?
For, for these records requests, yeah.
They, they have a lot of responsibilities already, maybe eventually, one day, but that's, I'm trying to get this a little shorter-term than that. I mean, Mason's still learning his job, this is week two. I was also going to run the hiring utilities quick, hopefully soon, and Alexi April is doing two jobs, two full-time jobs right now. And then Matt's obviously doing some of that too, along with his other duties.
With his help, do we also have, Jacob picked up any other?
Well, Jake, Jacob, well, great code enforcement, and we might expand that to maybe the cops and handle stuff. I don't think he'd be interested in doing, I can't speak on behalf of him, I don't think he would be interested in doing a record.
But we have dispatchers too, I'm looking to do that.
And that's where my mind nearly went to is a reorganization of sorts over there, maybe bring one full-time or hiring someone in full-time, or maybe hiring someone in part-time and do some hours here during the week. We're just spitballing right now.
I think we need to reach out. I think we need to reach out to our current employees and see if anyone's interested in more hours and go in that direction first. And if everyone declines or, you know, isn't able to, then we look outside and see if we can find someone. But I'd like to check internally first and see if we've got someone to, to step up and take on these extra hours.
So, we have how many record requests outstanding, 21?
We have around 21 pending record requests, reaching back as far as February.
From February?
Body cam stuff, redactions that I just can't find the time to get done, or I'm still trying to find information or maybe get clarification in some areas. But, or maybe the case is still, still open and so.
As far as spending your time redacting, like, do you even know what you're supposed, I know you know what you're supposed to be redacting, but like, that's not your field, that's not your team.
No, I do, but I don't, I mean, I haven't actually done much redacting because I haven't had the time to actually learn a whole nother special thing.
You shouldn't have to, no.
Well, Paul's points were well-taken. He's gotta be free to do his.
Right, we're paying him to do a job that's not redacting.
The problem is we didn't replace the person, Mandy, that was redacting, that's the problem. That's the, that's the only problem we got here, is, is we just need to fill that. What's a reasonable timeframe, Paul?
What do you mean, for, to respond to a public?
Yeah, by law, what's, what's reasonable?
There's no, there's no fixed time that's reasonable, it's up to the court.
Just when it goes to court and, or to the.
Court, to the side, whether it's reasonable or.
Ohio Attorney General.
Pardon?
The Ohio Attorney General.
Well, no, generally, you would, you would.
State it to the court.
Yeah, take it to the local.
County, police court.
Police court, yeah.
So, if, if somebody, if we have a, if we have a resident that put in an information request and, and there was maybe, I don't know, possible breaking of the law of some sort, do they have a right to that information?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
So, if there could be pending litigation against somebody and they wanna, and they're asking for an information request, they put an information request pending, pending that, that litigation.
Like in an open investigation?
Talking like criminal or civil investigation?
Well, we don't know yet, nobody has said. So, do they have a right to that information?
If it's public record, certainly.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question from the peanut gallery?
You sure can.
How much does it cost me if I wanna request a video of an interaction I had with the chief? Can I come in and make that records request for body cam?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No, not if you, not if you, not if you are involved in it.
If I want a record of it, as a regular citizen?
Okay.
I would pay something.
Okay, so if it's interaction with me, I don't pay anything, but if I want, if Bill gets arrested and I wanna see that video, then I pay.
$75 per hour, $750 per, per request.
Good question.
And that's common with other municipalities?
That's just, that's law.
Oh, that is law.
That just got put, that just got passed by law, that's a statement, that's all.
'Cause that's what I did, I read on other committees with the $70, so I just wanna make sure.
It just, it just passed in April.
Okay. Thanks.
So, if we're listening right, you guys are on it.
Yes.
He'll come back with us with, with seems like a good plan.
Yes, yes.
The only suggestion I can make is that if we have a dispatcher or somebody internally who's like, yep, I'll, I'll do the training, we need to, we need two people to have this training, even if one is just a backup, we need to train two people. Because if we trained two people when Mandy was trained, we wouldn't be here. I mean, we need two people.
Cross-training.
Two people trained, yep, cross-training.
Called cross-training.
Yeah, two people. And now, one of them is not the chief, he doesn't have.
Correct.
I need to.
I agree with that.
Well, no, you do, but I just mean, you need you plus two, not you plus one.
Did you have anything else that you wanted to share on this?
Nothing on this topic.
I wanna move on, back to public safety, we're gonna finish up that. I wanted to bring to council the, the discussion of possibly bringing back the North Baltimore fireworks. I was wondering if we would be on board to pursue that. I was thinking maybe we could, one, go, and I didn't know where our tax exempt thing was, I know you were for, I'm drawing blank, I'm sorry.
Somebody's working on it.
Well, it was the, so that we can take donations.
Are you talking about for the village or for the festival? For the village, it's 501(c)(6).
Okay, for the village.
For the village, that's the village.
Okay.
But we're working on with the festival, we are meeting every two weeks, talking about trying to get a festival this week. We're still waiting on the 501(c)(3) for the festival, that has nothing to do with the village.
(inaudible).
No, it's not, we're waiting on the 501(c)(3), that's what you want, yeah?
So, is the.
What's that?
I'm looking at 501(c)(6) to take donations.
I don't, I don't, I thought you said.
That's why we made him separate.
So, do we have a 501(c)(6)?
No.
No.
Our attorney that's working on it said that he would like to work on one at a time. Yep, so that they don't get interrupted.
'Cause my idea was, is if we could go to the businesses and ask for donations and then we could put donation boxes in the different businesses in town for residents to donate. And then if, and I don't know if we're even allowed to, but if we were allowed to subsidize some money towards this, as a village.
Absolutely.
So, you know, that's what I kinda wanted to bring to discussion and see where everyone was on that.
Are you looking for commercial or are you looking for like what we do? And I'm not suggesting that we do anything, I'm just asking.
I was looking commercial, like what we did before.
'Cause you're talking about $3,000 versus $20,000.
Right, it'd probably be between 15 and 20, 'cause the last time was 15,000. So, it'd be 15 to 20,000, so I don't know, I would assume you need it to be licensed, so.
If, only if you, only if you're doing commercial. If you are, if you are doing residential, which what we're doing this week, and you do not have to be licensed because by the Ohio RIS code, as long as it's not, what's the grant? 1.4 grants, they are legal to write it off in the state of Ohio.
By the way, you have pronounced a two-pager at the front desk of all the fireworks laws and Ohio RIS code, they should.
I'm just sharing with you, a person, a person could put on a really good show if you had the right people without paying commercial, especially down at the park, right, because it's, it's open down there, right? You can do it on the other side of the park and everybody can go, and that's what I would like to do sometime, try to put something together.
So, what is the, what is the rules as far as taking donations from businesses? Can we do that, or is that absolutely not possible right now?
You can, but they won't donate because you're not 501(c)(3). Once we become 501(c)(3) stat, well, they can, some may, but they, they usually donate so that they can write it off.
I understand, I understand.
So, we can't do that right now until we get our 501(c)(3) status, right?
But we could put, and we could put the boxes in businesses for the residents to donate without any problems.
Sure, yes.
Well, you would be attaching that to the. Well, you would be attaching that to the fest, are we, five oh one C six then?
No, that's, festival's five oh one C three.
Right.
The, the five oh one C six is for economic development purposes for the village of North Baltimore, it's all, that is the village. Yes, sir, the five oh one C three is for the festival, it has nothing to do with the village, it's like the Chamber of Commerce.
Right, I see.
Yeah, it's like the Chamber of Commerce that we're acting indifferently, but this body has supported the festival up to this point, because you guys are, this body is the one that gave us the finances to do what we've done up to this point, which was the Halloween parade. We're trying to put something together, which I'll address you guys later on, once we get more organized. We're, we're meeting every two weeks right now. So, and I don't wanna, we're too far off on this, but it can coincide, so, um, we're meeting every two weeks right now, trying to get this thing thrown together. We got a tentative date, I don't wanna share that yet, because we're still working on getting vendors and everything, so we don't wanna lock a date in without that, there is no, there is no fireworks attached to that, at this point.
But if you were to attach it to it, then you can attach it to that five oh one C three.
They don't have it yet.
We don't have it.
But I mean, one you've.
Oh, yes, yes, sir, yeah, yes, we could, yes, it could, yes. So that was, that was the whole scheme of things with, uh, five oh one C three coming in with the festival committee, having the economic development dinner, all of us supposed to coincide for this very reason, let the businesses know that, hey, these are some of the things that we got going on, that we wanna do in the future, and if you're willing to donate, we would really appreciate it. And I shared with you guys before the bakery feeds gentleman, the conveyor rans, come up to my office and said, hey, I would like to donate five hundred dollars to your guys' festival, I said, we don't have a festival anymore, we have to go talk to the Chamber of Commerce, and we cannot even write it off, so. Um, he said, well, let me know when you guys get your five oh one C three, we would like to do something or donate to the village. I said, yeah, he's wonderful, I'll let you know, so. Um, we've been working on five oh one C threes, everybody knows, for quite some time. All the fireworks is, but right now, everything's been submitted to, I think it's the IRS.
Yeah, it's a long process.
Yeah, so the IRS, it is now, I got everything that we needed, officially signed documents from the, from the, from the festival organization, and, and he has got them and sent them back, and he sent it, so that's all we're waiting for. And that's one of the reasons why we haven't pulled the trigger on this yet, because we haven't got our five oh one C three status. But as I was thinking, I don't think you, this body is already giving us the finances to have this year's festival. I think we've got enough money to do it, because we're gonna try to keep it small to get it started, was the conversation, try to bring back some of the stuff, keep it small. Maybe we just pull the trigger on the committee, or the festival this year without five oh one C three, right? It wouldn't hurt us one bit, the, the village of North Baltimore is already financing it. And then go for more donations and more support next year, and possibly throw in fireworks next year, once, once we get this thing up and running. Thing is, getting it up and running, which is, is gonna help us with the door that he's gonna be presenting to you guys tonight, so.
Yeah, would you wanna say, if they can segue it to the door or something like that?
Yeah, I got to go, I'm sorry.
So I guess my question is then, would we be in support of putting the boxes in local businesses to see if we can start generating some donations?
I would not, until you know what's going on, because you don't wanna make a promise you can't keep.
Are you trying to get something for this year?
No, this would be for twenty twenty-six.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think we're gonna have, I, I think, I would agree with this, both of you, I would, I would wait and see how this whole thing pans out. And I think it's already gonna, I think it's already gonna get incorporated in twenty twenty-six, because everybody wants it. So, even the people on the committee, on the board of the festival organization, wants the fireworks, so. It's just a matter of getting this thing up and running, getting this thing started, and then building it from year to year, and getting it back to what this, what this community deserves.
Maybe like, if, if we get the five oh one C three, and we know it, like, a January kickoff?
That's great, exactly right.
Would work, as far as like, putting the donation box around, you know, new year, new, you know, let's celebrate.
Right. We'll bring backup months to get that five oh one C three then.
New year, new council.
No, there you go. Okay.
Sure.
Um, we're gonna move on, so these are questions for public safety. Dave, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah.
You're good? Any other questions? Okay. Um, Hoover, did you have anything? I also didn't have anything, so we're gonna move on. Public works, Paula.
So, um, I never got that quote yet, I, that's a pretty big quote, I think they're working on. I did a tour with Craig and Chris, and Josh Long actually, Friday, June twentieth, so I still time, just kind of short notice there.
Is that by the cameras?
Cameras, yes, um, I found out, we actually have three cameras already, two around the dumpster, and one looking out into the park, um, by the hill. But, uh, we, I still would like, uh, camera, additional cameras by the water plant, and we obviously want to increase our coverage into the park itself. I talked to Craig, he's probably working on some technical details on getting service all the way to the baseball fields on the east side, cause I would like to have coverage over that, that playground, so they can go in exclusively. Also, uh, coverage over the basketball court on the west side, and coverage over the community garden and the bathroom there, and maybe additional cameras. To my knowledge, Josh Long's predecessor have already put up electricity, saved us quite a bit of money, I think. So all we gotta do is, oh, Intact's gonna have to do pretty much for the most part, is point, um, a repeater of sorts at each device, and they should be, they should work, basically. Intact did say they don't get paid enough to go up in a bucket truck, so I'm sure Josh Long has got to easily do it with their.
I think we did the last time, didn't we, on the barn?
So, yeah, we're still waiting on that quote. I don't wanna include everything, but I do think it's necessary, and I'm curious, I believe council agrees to that statement. But if we wanna take a step back, or we want to just fully act this idea, I understand, that's what council wants to go forward with, but I think with the increased vandalism going on, this might be the best way forward, or the only way forward, to be honest. Outside of, we've already done this locker bathroom at night, and have the cops, no, you guys opened it up in the morning, and then having to increase patrols, but that's, those are minor band-aids, I don't think those are gonna fix any issues, outside of, um, kids come home, and before you start type of thing, or we. Yeah, I'm assuming it's kids, it could be adults, I guess, it could be adults.
The, the, putting up a tower, would you go with the machine guns, for like, uh?
No, um, if we don't wanna, if we.
No, no.
No, it's just, no, no. No, I, I don't, I mean, I would think that maybe one of Chief After these guys would love to do that all day.
The paint gun?
But that would, that would probably be on the front page of the news, and not be good coverage.
You know, that's, that sounds funny, when you said paint gun, but I just read an article today where this one area, I don't know where, whatever, but they've got paint guns mounted on these four-wheel things, side by sides, whatever you call them, for, for trolling a certain area in a park, a large, but, yeah, they use paint guns.
Okay.
They hurt, and you can compare them.
Especially if you freeze them and then.
Okay, Paula, did you have anything else? Okay, any questions for Paula? All right, we're gonna move on to public utility.
I don't actually have anybody, so. So currently, right now, uh, we do have all our filter underdrain system that got delivered. They are going to start construction on replacing that filter on Monday. And other than that, really don't have a whole, a whole lot added. Uh, we're doing our lead copper sampling right now. We set out all the bottles yesterday, and surprisingly, we got seventeen out of the twenty back in one day, so that's really good. Hopefully, we get the, the other three tomorrow, so we can get them all sent in for testing on Thursday. Uh, once we get those results, we have forty-eight hours to get the residents the results that we get from the EPA, and seventy-two hours to have everything submitted back to the EPA, showing that, um, we've done what we're supposed to be doing. Uh, so other than that, everything's pretty good. Uh, we did get, uh, we did just, do you have a sludge, our sludge lagoons, um, their, um, permit was up, uh, so we just went through the permit process on that to get that renewed. So that should be renewed in October, uh, which will be good for five, the next five years. Uh, so the permits gotta be renewed every five years, they come out, inspect everything, look at everything, make sure everything's kosher. So that went pretty well, um, and other than that, we're really just staying busy, I mean, with, uh, we're working on, to prevent filters from blowing up in the future, we have a air relief blower valve, which we never had before. Uh, we had that installed, but currently, right now, we're manually opening and closing it. We did get the, let's call it, material to build a relay to get everything wired in. Right now, we're just trying to figure out where the wires are actually going to, cause there's thousands of them, um, and trying to trace them out, figure out what ones we need to actually tie to to make this actually work where it's supposed to. So hopefully, within the next week or so, um, we'll, we'll have that thing up and running, so we can switch upstairs, so it doesn't have to go downstairs and close up my heat, which we're doing now, but, uh, you know, it just adds an extra step, but it, it's working. Uh, but we wanted to make it more, you know, efficient. Then other than that, I don't really have anything else, unless anybody else has any questions.
Let me backtrack, let me ask a favor from you, Josh. Give us a Reader's Digest condensed version of what you told me about the light.
Uh, two Wednesdays ago, I would believe it to be the eighteenth, and the power pole came down, it caused the issue. According to US Utility, it was either that, or the power company over the next couple of days turning power off and on fried the controller. So, yes. So their controller's in there right now, we got one in order. However, the pre-construction meeting we had about Broadway?
East Broadway, yeah.
East Broadway, whoever the gentleman was that sits here, sat here.
Yeah.
They've requested for the project that the light be in the sequence it is right now.
I thought it went in a four-way.
Oh, no, no.
Oh.
Yeah, cause they want traffic to back up.
They don't want traffic to back up.
Understood.
So, I guess means it's, project's supposed to commence Monday, there's no reason to change it if we get the controller sometime between now and then.
So it's broken, but it's good until the project is over.
That's, that's their controller, that's, but, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, like, if somebody like, why isn't it that way, it's like, it's broken? But we're gonna change it anyways for the project?
Yes.
It's a great timing, probably, it's a little crafty before the real thing.
After the project.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Josh.
Speaking on that project.
Please don't leave.
For the fire side of it, is we gonna be able to get down Broadway?
Him or me?
Both of you. One more thing for you.
Josh, will we be able to get down Broadway when this project starts?
Broadway should be in print from wrong, guys, should be one lane.
One lane, okay.
I know I've had a conversation with the owners of Marathon and the drive-thru, one owner. Uh, I'm gonna talk to the pre-construction, pre-construction guys again, see if we can make sure, we'll be able, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to keep the drive through, and do this whole process.
I just want to make sure if I need to go that way with fire truck, I can.
Yes.
Get that one.
Okay, any other questions for Brian? But you wanted to say something?
Yes, for T-Mobile.
We're going to go to Tim for finance and technology.
T-Mobile.
So, uh, I was approached by a representative, uh, not from T-Mobile, from a company, who's going through that, basically. Uh, you have the agreement, uh, your third, uh, third amendment to communications site lease agreement. First agreement was two thousand and five with, what was the company called? Anyway, back in the day, uh, now it's.
Next teller.
Next tell, yeah, now it's, now it's T-Mobile. So basically, uh, you see the next page, you can see, uh, the year by year that Matt previously gave me. Uh, it's, it's an increase, an increase again, was two thousand two, two thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars in twenty twenty-four, and then twenty twenty-five, well, February twenty twenty-five, April, and starting slowly increased, two thousand four hundred eighty-six, two thousand six hundred twenty-three. They wanna increase it starting in twenty thirty to two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars per month, beginning April twentieth. I believe it's five years, I'm, I'm not exactly. So, um.
Two thousands plus per month for?
Two, uh, in print from wrong, if you know what I do on this, but basically, they have equipment up there.
Correct.
Water towers.
Correct.
One or both?
One, just one, on Grant Road.
On Grant Road. So they use that, I'm assuming, to.
Cell phones.
Cell phone service.
Yeah, so basically, like a Verizon tower, they use our water tower for.
Oh, so this two thousand, is it what we pay or they pay us?
They pay us. Yeah, they pay us, we just allow them to be up there.
Yes.
See what I get, miss, if I get up to change the calendar?
So, it's pretty simple, um, uh, yeah, I, I'm not sure if I need a resolution next week or not, maybe, to accept that, to accept that? Maybe I see someone, just a verbal.
Was that their offer, or was that what we asked them to pay?
They came to me with this.
With their offer, that offer?
Two thousand nine hundred, yeah.
So, so, thirty-one hundred?
Thirty-five.
Ask, do we need a resolution?
We're talking, we're talking five years from now.
Yeah.
Do we need that space?
Yes, the amendment to a communications site lease agreement. Okay.
Did we counteroffer that, or?
We have not done anything, I just said, oh, we talked to council, uh, I don't see why we couldn't counteroffer.
Well, we're talking five years from now, right?
Yes.
So we might wanna put all that in thought before we agree to that number, cause we may be extremely under what we could get.
And how long is that contract gonna be good for?
Five years.
Just five years?
The tenant is granted five years, five additional renewal term, beginning of, yeah.
What if it's at a percentage of increase, true?
It's said after thirty-five, over twelve percent.
Yeah, yeah, twenty, twenty-three five.
I would say counter.
So you know what they're, what are they doing now?
What are they doing?
What are they paying?
Oh, what they paying now?
A little over twenty-six, I agree.
Well, that's not really a lot, if they're.
And they probably got a good deal, I would think, cause, I mean, they could just make their own, buy land, put a tower, and spend ten to thousands of dollars.
Or rent land.
Or rent lands.
Church I worked for, we were out in the country, and they came to us to rent a corner of our property, so they do that.
Right, so.
How do we find out what they're cooking?
I could, I guess, reach out to Intact, maybe they have a, an understanding of what better price counteroffer would look like.
Could reach out to a couple of villages, too.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like, who do we know?
Because if they're, they're, they're offering us that, they're willing to pay more.
Cause you're nothing in five years.
They don't, they don't wanna take their stuff off the water tower, I, I feel that, so, I mean, I, I would say if they're offering us twenty-nine, we should be, ask for, I would say, minimum of thirty-five, thirty-six, somewhere right around there.
Well, twelve percent, five years, always, if that's not cheap.
Okay, I don't know if you have another village.
Is there any negatives, I mean, from your viewpoint of it being up on the?
It's been there forever, so, I mean, pretty much, I think that was one of the first things that went up on that water tower, was that. But since then, I mean, we've got, uh, sheriff's stuff up there, uh, and Amplex up there, I mean, it's, nothing else is going up there.
Thing is the money.
The wind, um, but, um, I.
How much should we get return key in that, that one property?
Twenty-five hundred a month.
Yeah, twenty-five hundred.
So we get more off of them just putting, putting the whole building, okay. Okay.
But they're making millions and millions and millions, I mean, the, the phone company is. And they're, they're spreading that out by two, three cents over all their units.
We want a few more peanuts.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
They can give us thirty-five hundred.
Yes, I, but I, well, you, you could try whatever, I would, I would say at minimum, that's what I would say.
Your phone bill's gonna go up.
I don't think so.
I'm thinking about switching, cause ATT has like, no service in town.
Neither does Verizon.
No, I just.
Very thankful for council giving me this phone, cause otherwise, I would be just.
It's like the spectrum's already gone.
I know.
Spectrums.
Let me ask a favor on that.
Yes.
On this discussion, if, not to dump it on him, but would you be willing to research that and give him and us a suggestion on, on the, on that lease?
Yeah.
We'll look at that, for sure. And Intact will.
All, everybody agree?
Yep.
We can take the CSX property agreement, right? We can take the CSX property agreement, right? Now, for real, and take what they were telling us, that it would increase for us, right?
We could probably copy and paste, yeah.
Well, I'm not saying use the numbers, but use the math that they used. Because they have a lot smarter people than us going over what cost of living's gonna be and what they need to draw.
Use their formula.
Yeah, so why don't we use that to our advantage?
That's right. We did not. Just throwing that out there.
For them, it made a lot of sense.
But we had nothing on that property.
Well, that's right.
Right.
So, okay, any other discussion on that? He's gonna get some information for us, and we'll proceed from there. Um, any questions for Tim? All right, moving on to personal policy and ordinance review. Dave?
I have pretty.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, guys.
Well, frankly, that's the best one.
So we got the, the equipment authorization form from Mr. Bender, put a lot of time into it.
Yes, we, I kind of forgot to put this on the agenda for last, uh, council meeting, last month, we didn't, the housing deed, the city man. But I thought that maybe I would include, uh, an email from our insurance and email from Mr. Paul's guy here. Uh, and then obviously the area itself for more understanding, I know you went through a little bit earlier, so the insurance destination too.
Well, our insurance, our, well, Paul advised us not to move forward with that, and our insurance said they would not cover us on a third party. I'm sorry?
Correct. Asked about that because I think, I believe that his email was that he, he would be under the impression that our homeowners' insurance would not cover that as a third party, correct? I have.
Well, the mayor may not.
Yeah, correct. So I have a letter from, I have a letter from my insurance company that states that they would provide insurance and coverage if somebody was injured or hurt, uh, as long as it was on our property, which is basically what that contract would be stating, is that it can only be used on your personal property at all. I can't borrow it and use that my neighbor's house, or.
Correct, but the issue is getting a two-year property, or if something happens where a third party can come after us, they're gonna come after the village. And our insurance company has stated, no, they will not cover us if a third party comes after us. So we would not be covered as the village.
I know. Question. Eric, do you have any idea what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I read through it. I have two contracts every day, so I have some interesting thoughts.
I didn't want, I didn't want to.
So that's my concern.
No, I'll do it. Thank you.
Our insurance company has stated they would not cover us if a third party came after us, and the fact is that that piece of equipment has to make it from the village to wherever it's going, to wherever someone's going, and if there was an accident, um, that third party would absolutely name us in a lawsuit as well, and we would not be covered. Um, I also go back to the optics. This is not an entity that owns this equipment. This is the village, and the taxpayers paid for this equipment.
The water department paid for our equipment?
I'm sorry?
So the water department pays for our equipment?
Yes.
Not taxpayers?
So none of the taxpayers' money goes into that?
Not our equipment, no, no man.
Well, I think the optics is not gonna be good, um, when someone takes some equipment home, problems breaks down and they have to repair it.
I, I guess now I'm just really confused. How are, how are they funded?
Through the water bills.
So the taxpayers are paying that?
Well, not taxpayers.
The residents?
The residents, yes.
Residents.
When you pay your water bill.
So the residents are still doing that?
Well, and commercials, commercials, mud company, steel.
Correct.
Yes, they're all paying for that. Yes, correct.
So if we have a water purchase increase, the women don't, well, fly, you know, they're just gonna be, optics are not gonna be good when it comes to.
I personally do not care.
Okay.
I mean, one way or the other. Uh, I asked a year ago for this to take place, and we're, we're still dragging our feet. I just want a yes or no, and I, I believe a month or so ago, two months ago, I said, is this something that we're going to be even interested in? Because I don't wanna waste my time.
Right.
With this, which, which I have done.
And I voiced my concern at that time, that I would not support it, because I didn't think the optics were good, and I wanted an answer from the insurance company. And when the insurance company said, no, we're not going to, um, cover you on a third-party lawsuit, that was, that was the end of it right there for me. And then also Paul said that we should not, it was not a good idea to do this. So that's where I stand. Everyone else can.
Yeah, I mean, put it on Tuesday.
Yeah, put the vote on Tuesday and see what, and then.
Which was, I thought was happening last month. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be here if it happened last month.
Yes, yes.
I apologize.
That wasn't my mistake.
Is, is not that we're trying to drag it along and waste anybody's time. What we wanted to do was give the idea in the document an opportunity to mature and maybe look better than it looked initially.
Correct, correct.
So that's why we've taken our time and kind of slowly walked through this, because we wanted to give this an opportunity to be something that we could offer to the people who work for us, right?
Correct.
So that, that's why we've taken our time and really gave every opportunity for every entity to give us the information that we needed to make a educated decision.
Correct.
Well, I believe it wasn't until June, until we got the answer from our insurance company.
Yeah, and it was. So if you feel like we've wasted your time, I apologize, because that was none of the intent. Or the intent to drag it out and, uh, make it irrelevant.
Oh, well, we're good. If we got voted on last, last month, we wouldn't be having this discussion again.
Yeah, and it just never, it was on the agenda and never just, never came up in conversation. It was, was strange on that part.
Yeah.
Yeah, did not, did not, there was other things that went on that more took our focus.
Yes.
So I apologize.
Yep, that's all good.
We will get it taken care of on Tuesday.
Yes, we will. I will not forget again. But now, Brian, you may go enjoy tacos.
Thank you.
You making me stay here, Josh?
For one more.
I see.
Yep, that's Josh. I'll wait for you.
Okay.
Andrew, you're in the corner.
Nobody puts Josh. She goes on Candace.
Except Josh.
Okay, uh.
High grass. And I was gonna move on to the next one.
Okay, uh, so I turned it upon myself, because I could, really don't want to use our people, basically. I'll use a third party if possible. I do have the authority, but I can't actually do the agreement based off of the current fee schedule that we have, a few, a couple pages. Um, our current fee schedule, uh, is a hundred bucks for two hours, and then seventy-five bucks for additional hour of labor, continued maintenance, so second, third, et cetera, a hundred and seventy-five bucks for two hours, and a hundred bucks for additional hour of labor. That's, this is two thousand seven. And I did reach out to Pine Line, uh, and I reached out to Griffith Landscaping. Um, they both agreed two hundred is gonna be pretty much their minimum. So I combined both of these, made it so it's, you can't distinguish between either the first or the second, third, into just two hundred fifty for two hours and a hundred bucks for additional hour after that. So what I'm thinking about doing is doing agreements with maybe one, maybe both. Maybe just call when, well, it might, it might not be available, when it might, might not be available time for mowing the lawn. That's what I'm doing. So I added fifty bucks to all of that, or industry costs for us. Uh, but also, this is assessing, assessing a property, which we did do two of them already based off of the current fee schedule. So basically, when the property's sold, it's, it seems, in correction from wrong, and some of this, how liens and all that work, but basically, when the property's sold, we get our money back.
Not when it's sold, it's just, it's assessed on your property taxes.
Yes.
It don't have to be sold.
So.
But if, if the owner is unavailable to pay their taxes, like, and then when that goes up for auction, they, then it would be assessed to the cost of, or to the whatever reached at auction, right? And then whatever we've assessed to that, that tax or that delinquent tax would be paid to us correctly.
And unless the company sells it cheaper than that.
Well, kinda like we, uh, we got, we got hurt twice, didn't we? So we've already assessed four eleven east lawn. So we mowed their lawn last Friday, East four eleven east lawn. Uh, the property is suspected to be abandoned of sorts, at least for now.
That's a lawn.
Four eleven east lawn, uh, southwest part of town. And then we also did it for three oh one South Co., uh, which is a total of like seven parcels. Took four hours for a guy to mow that. Uh, but we only got two hundred fifty bucks. Is up of our current fee schedule, which makes no sense. It isn't paper to sell, or.
We needed a farmer to come in and bail that.
Right. So what I did was increase it. So if we did use our guys going forward, we actually, you know, the thought is we'd get more money eventually, but let's get that money back. But also, again, our, please chirp in, Josh, but our equipment is very expensive, and I wanna make sure our wear and tear on it is, uh, thought of when we talk about these things. Also, I wanna talk about, um, some properties we don't wanna mow because of what's on the property. Uh, maybe it's, it's too much of a danger for a third party or for our guys to be beyond that. So in those situations.
Guys, we don't even know. I mean, like these, these couple that we mowed.
Yes.
We have no clue what's.
And you gotta go slow.
You gotta go slow. You walk through stuff. You're not gonna find everything. And the cheapest piece of equipment we have is three of these Toro mower, five-foot deck mowers. I think we paid ninety-five hundred apiece. So to go out there and ruin them for, ruin one for a hundred bucks or two hundred bucks, or if we have to get the big tractor out and the bush hog, there's fifty thousand dollars worth of stuff that you really don't wanna ruin. I don't know how many tires we had to replace on the blue tractor when Douglas mowing CSX for absolutely nothing. And them tires were eight hundred and some dollars at the time, and that's, that's been upwards of ten years ago. And I'm sure they nearly doubled. So it's just, makes no sense.
I would like that flexibility if he's a third party.
If you think of the money, though, with the taxes, we're not gonna, if we send out our guys, we don't have to pay, by the way, but if we pay contractor, we're gonna have to pay them right now.
Yes, that is, that is an issue.
And not wait for the money, so.
Yes.
So whatever.
So is it something you would like, contact Josh and be like, hey, we have that, do you got some time? Or do you wanna do it to somebody else?
That's one of the thoughts, that's one of the thoughts, yes.
Because that would be.
And I do have the authority. I don't need a resolution, uh, to go and agree with anyone next week. I already have the authority by our current code to do pretty much whatever I need to do, the way it's worded, and you can see that wording actually here. Those administrator is authorized, empowered, and directed to cause to be cut or destroyed all high grass in excess of five inches of ground. So I have, right, right, do the authority off of that.
Is that an original wording?
That's original. That's original. But I can get a little flexible with it. If maybe his guys are available, or it's an easy no, do it. But again, sometimes we don't want anyone mowing those properties, or to cite, which we have, we've done today, actually, with the property. So we, we'll cite, cite, cite if we need to, um, even if we don't, can't find the owner, if he hasn't certified mail, uh, to activate it on a file.
Two things, Josh.
Yes.
One, uh, if it was, it's possible, see if Jacob can come and sit in on a meeting now and then.
Yeah, I mean, he wasn't the.
Well, he hadn't even been here yesterday.
Well, yeah, yeah, because of that meeting yesterday with the mayor and I and Josh here. So we did voice his, uh, opinions and his.
And use your.
He used to go with the cat stuff, yes.
Secondly, um, unless things have changed, you got, your guys are stretched pretty thin anyway.
Yes, and that's why I'm trying to avoid this, using that more.
Okay.
That's why I need this agreement, this resolution next, ordinance?
Do we have?
Ordinance next week.
Local lawn service providers?
That are insured?
Yes.
I'm not too aware. I do more, I definitely do more research into it. I don't, there's two I know.
Please, yeah, I would prefer to see a local.
I agree.
Give our money in town, give them the business. That's the only suggestion I make.
Josh, if you, have you suggested talk about?
Chad Wright, uh, the.
They gotta be LLC of sorts.
Coffman, Coffman, and, and I don't know if they are.
I can't do one of those.
I think Chad Wright is a nice publicist, too.
Coffman is?
Justin does my lawn and he does the church, and I know he's, he's booked as of now, but he's got some too as well, but I'm just saying, he's excellent.
If they have the documentation, if they're registered as Secretary of State, I believe, then I would be glad to do business with them. At least put him on my, my roster. Okay, and then one thing I did wanna talk about, the mayor wanted me to pretty much discuss, is proposed language, or original language. I did talk to Jeff Dennis a little bit and Paul on the email today. Um, it was basically every day after, um, a citation. So basically, you have a violation for tall grass. They'll have to wait five days until we actually cite or assess. If we wanna cite, um, I'd be cite, but the second citation, we have the authority right now to do it the day after, and the day after that, the day after that. Uh, the mayor, uh, was under the impression, or with the thought, that council at one time, um, agreed that it should be, or five days or seven days after the first citation to give the second citation.
No, wait, we're already waiting five days when we're citing them?
Yes.
And then we're gonna pine them and wait another five days? So it's gonna be now ten days of grass that's too tall? Is that what I'm understanding?
That is, that is how I interpreted the mayor's opinion on this.
I don't, I wouldn't agree with that, but.
Well, what he said was the, the prosecutor, whoever, whoever the guy was to talk to said, uh, it's five days, but he is, if it goes over in front of him, he ain't gonna do nothing about it.
Yes, and I did read on Jeff Dennis today, and I know Paul saw that email, and I talked to him too on the phone, Joe. Uh, he said that he will adhere to what our current code says of the day after. Uh, so the mayor must have mistaken on that point. I talked to the mayor about that briefly earlier, too. So, um, five days, five, well, you cite, I'm sorry, you give the violation, and then day one, day after, two, three, four, five, his calendar days. Uh, and then we cite as soon as we can, take Jake as soon as we can, and then if we can't, give him the, oh, then we cite again, and we cite again, and we cite again. Now, what I do kinda agree with, maybe including in this, and the mayor and I talked about this before, or after I printed this off, was maybe we have a part where if it rains heavily, uh, we, we have a delay in there, um, after that first citation, at least, where if it rains seven days straight, then we'll give you some leeway, basically. Um, I already, already kinda have that discretion of sorts, if I'm, if I'm a black and white, I don't, but I think I do have discretion of some sorts, but we can put clause in there, reading some of that sort. I mean, Paul gave.
The prosecutor certainly has the discretion to charge or not charge.
Yes, prosecutor does, yes, yes. And I guess if it did rain for seven days straight or so, they would probably keep, put that into consideration anyways. Uh, but I wanna make sure that what we says out to the prosecutor is a little more air tight.
Well, let me ask you this. If we don't put that in there, the rain part, and we just don't cite them because of the rain, like, we take that upon ourselves to go, you know what? It's raining, I'm not gonna go cite them. Are we creating a precedent that's gonna connect the bias?
And we don't have to start back over stuff from zero yet.
Okay.
No.
No, okay. There's that discount, but if it's pouring rain in the back of the town.
We are not out there to cite people. We're out there to make our town look good, keeping up the prop, the properties. And sometimes people abandon properties or they are deceased and they can't, and we have to set the property because otherwise, they'll just go by the wayside, like three oh one South Co. Huge block of property off of one of our, one of our main arteries of sorts. South Co. is pretty, pretty important. Everyone sees that. Looks down the town, so.
We got one on the asking.
And does our.
That's what I say.
Yeah, the guy that goes out, our officer.
Jacob.
Jacob. Like, if he shows up at a house, the lawn needs mowed.
Yes. You talk to him first if you can.
Correct. And we got like, it's an eighty-year-old, well, I can't do that, mom's five, but you've got somebody who physically can't look, like, you know, like, you've done that. Like, does he have a list of people that he can, like, call and be like, hey, can you bring our people?
So.
Without a, and I don't mean that, but for those five days, we have the right to help these people.
I have directed my co-직원 officer to not do something like that, 'cause I do not want to show favoritism to any specific business.
Correct, but he could come to you, ah, he'd like, you know what I mean?
Can I offer that?
That's what I mean. I really don't want to show favoritism.
Let me just put it off, but if you can't mow your yard, here's some people you can do, but I'm still gonna do the five days. I don't know.
So one of my villagers raised this very issue last year, and what they did is they took, like, high school kids who volunteer.
Right.
Just put them on a list.
Right.
And sign up. So in that scenario, this elderly person is given a list of five, six, seven high school kids who wanna do a good deed, and. who want to do a good deed and that person, the homeowner can call anyone on that list.
Boy scout.
That they want. We're not, we're not endorsing any of these kids. We're not vouching for them. We put the burden on the homeowner to call.
Absolutely.
And say, hey, you can call any of these kids. Maybe they'll do it for free. Maybe do it for five bucks. Maybe do it for a glass of lemonade, whatever.
Right.
Yeah, we have our boy scouts in town. We also have churches in town that we might, you know, ask them if they'd be willing to.
I'm overly cautious in this from the things.
Well, and he would have to decide when he's talking to this person. Like if I answer the door and I'm like, and he's talking in, I'm like, yeah, it's the town, not, you know. Obviously, he's not gonna hand me a list of people who can mow my yard because I can go mow my own stupid yard. I'm talking about elderly or somebody.
Seventy-five, eighty-five, seventy-nine yard.
You come to the door, Walker.
Yeah.
You're not mowing.
I get it. I'm working on, I mean, every situation is different. Every house is different. Either it's abandoned or the person's just lazy or a person's handicapped or, I mean, the list goes on and on forever.
Right.
And we're trying to think about all these as they come across our desk.
But I like Paul's idea and I don't think it'd be that difficult to incorporate.
This, maybe we can just, like, some person can just call and say, hey, we're gonna put this list and we're gonna post it at the library and,
Yeah.
you know, just do it without doing it here.
I also just want to be very, again, even with that situation, let's say a high school kid runs over, I want to use cats out there, or-
Runs over a coat hanger and goes in his leg.
Or, yeah, runs over some rocks and the rocks squirt out and hit the glass. It's commercial. But there's so many different situations and then now we are, like, we recommended that person, now we're kind of not involved.
That's the thing, they're not recommending any of these kids.
Yeah.
I, I mean, we're always cautious.
The key to any liability, no matter what it is, and that's-
Overly cautious probably, but that's just, makes sense. So we probably do that. I mean, if you want to get lists maybe from, well, who's that session right now?
Yeah, like the boy scouts and, you know, even just some of our kids there.
Some badges?
I know some boys just down on the corner of walnut and tar.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That Lilacs is looking to per yard to mow. I haven't mowed mine.
Well, everyone reach out to me with your contact information, boy scouts, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll put it all together and I'll come up with a better idea on how to go about this and give it to Jacob for distribution for situations where he thinks the owner cannot go, can actually go.
Be like, hey, boom, boom, boom.
Yes.
You could even put a disclaimer on the paper you hand out that, you know, the village is not recommending any of these. These are just volunteers that community.
I'd be, I would like that. Definitely do that.
And they don't even need to be volunteers.
Right.
Anybody that wants to do it for ten bucks.
Right.
Yeah.
He has that whole summer job for him.
So it's just, you know.
Just create a whole free markets, you know, system out there where people are like, I'll tell, I'll do ten, I'll do it for twenty bucks.
But let's, let's also be honest. This is one of the things we like about living in this type of environment, small town America.
Okay, well, yeah, give me the information, everyone, and I'll, I'll put it together.
Thank you.
Okay, and just so we're clear, are we keeping the each day if continued, not compliance, the unofficial notice period, okay?
And it's at your discretion if it's raining, you know, we don't need to put that in there just if it's at your discretion. He said that we're not setting a precedent that with problems, you know, come back to light it from the-
Yeah, we, we're trying to be lenient with that. We don't want to assess properties. We don't want to cite people. I think Josh, Jacob Lamb is doing a great job going around knocking first and saying, you can mow your lawn. Oh, mow tomorrow. Don't mow tomorrow. There's no violation, no waste of time. Notable vehicles. He talks to everyone first, best as he can. He just started, if no one's home, he's putting a paper on their door saying, please call me. He's trying to go about not saying violations, not spending time on this.
Give him kudos because there's a house down the street from me that has been train wrecked for forty years that we've lived there. And I drove by there and I said, that cannot be the same yard. Can't be the same person. It is, I mean, he's got a little bit more dude around the house, but the yard itself, he's got one big double odds.
Yes.
So it was always bad. I mean, it was just like, you don't know what was in there. It was so big, so bad. So kudos.
I saw one today, the same thing.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Yeah. Some of this, the, the, the structure, the system is still being worked out. There's little kinks here and there with the, the chief, Jacob and I. But I think overall, there's a lot of progress being made and at all fronts and a lot of cars are being removed. There's no work, we're trying to remove thought that this is a junkyard from anyone's minds.
I was gonna adapt that from old Kings.
Unless you think of this town, he can take care of our cat problem too. You know, he's, he's, he's got a lot of experiences, a lot of expertise that I think he can utilize.
Okay. Anyone else got any questions on this topic? And let's move on to our next one.
Um, Josh, you welcome to stay or go to tacos?
I can go.
Yes.
I'm not gonna get tacos.
Good.
Are you sure?
Yes, I'm sure. We're talking about, um-
And it was CEO, right?
Before you get tacos.
I'm not going up there. I need.
What else would you do?
You know where I live?
I do.
Okay, so that back, we call it our back back yard.
That is-
Okay, and then as we-
Section four point oh four, which we have already, already discussed somewhat.
We've got our, okay. We've got our, okay, but like four yards of theater and then we're getting, they close the thing and then they buy it.
That was a policy meeting.
Don't put it in there for that.
Yes.
There aren't lots, because I would.
I mean, I believe all of this has changed. I do want to state, I did change.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, yeah.
The hour unpaid to half hour unpaid.
I, I can't.
Okay.
I can't blame you there.
So I don't want, I just want you guys to know that that's in there.
We won't do it.
Yeah, that's, they've got to fix that.
Josh won't send us down there, but we're good.
Hey, we'll see you tomorrow.
All right, Josh, go ahead and continue.
Okay, so the only change I made since I think the last revision outside of two forty-five to forty and all that we talked about before, Mr. Richmond, is I changed it from an hour unpaid to half an hour unpaid. So if I were to work from eight to five o'clock, I would get a half hour flex time. I was trying to stay in line with our Friday hours, which we do close at four thirty. Doesn't really make sense for us to stay till five o'clock anyways, so it just made sense to kind of stay in line with that, but also with our hourly employees too. So if I work from eight to five, I get a half hour flex time to be used during the pay period. So I just want to make sure that, make sure that change.
And have you got in there? Because we discussed only like four hour blocks. Like on a Friday, you can take the whole Friday off because we need somebody in here to cover. Is that in there or are we just gonna do that by discretionary?
So I know that, I went up there, is hourly and their flex time can only be used if supervisor's mostly this guy can, says you can't do, you can't use it. If he thinks he can handle the situation, stay here during that time, he's always gonna be covered. Guaranteed that, then he will allow people to leave and he will take the front desk, a couple of hours, whatever I need. But I can say that we do have supervision and accountability.
Okay.
There's no coverage. If I come here from wherever and there's no one at the front desk, I'm going to be pretty busy.
Did you hear that Mason? That includes you, buddy.
Yeah, it does include you, sir. Yes, and he's doing a great job as the interviews happening going on, with utility position, he's stepping up and handling this, my desk.
Thank you, sir. I, I heard something. Can't remember who recommended this, so forgive me for that. I've been thinking about this flex time. She's already covered all of my thoughts on it. But this person said that they had a thing in their work, and I guess this would be for you and that. That they had kind of an order and if they were using up flex time, it, if, you know, it went, you know, one, two, three, four, and then it could go back to one. So they had to kind of do it in order. Does that make any sense at all?
I mean, yes and no. It's just the fact of like only having one person like all the time. We could, we could handle more than one, but we just need at least somebody to cover. April's on vacation tomorrow and Thursday, so Mason and I are covering the counters. And she had that scheduled, but it's not idea with the, with the utility clerk. But whatever it is, we can still handle it. I don't really directly answer your question, but.
I just told, I told that individual, hey, I'll give it to our guys.
I don't like it really. It's going in a circle, but it's just that communication like. Or like, I took off that. You look at each other's calendars, you, you know, like naturally I can't be off right now. It's just, it's not possible.
Yeah.
The next two days, you just know that.
Yeah, make it work and that's a great job supervising up there. Again, we'll have someone up for recognition to hire on next Tuesday. If anything goes as planned. Okay, and then I also want to bring up that the ordinance, the high grass one and this four point oh four will be emergency. And I'm not sure, Dee, did you, I know you pulled that ordinance from your mailbox. Did you actually grab that?
I have not.
I was looking into potentially making resolutions. Only need one reading. It's actually best practice. I swear.
But legal to do?
It is legal and you recommend making it three readings for resolutions into one. Also get rid of, okay, by law.
What is it? You're, you want to create a council rule that skips the three reading requirement?
For resolutions. Organizations will still have three readings.
Ordinances and resolutions are treated exactly the same.
My research does not say so. I say, we, we cover it more later. I, I just put it in your mailbox. So we did that. But from my research, resolutions do not have to be three readings. Or what is it definitely? And this does make sense for like the three sixty water agreement. It does make sense for us to do three readings of, I mean, media authorization to sign an agreement or something like that. Also, that, what I have on there, the draft is basically, I'll yeou it to you, I'm sorry, everyone else. Basically, if we, council would once have more readings, we'll have more readings. We don't have to prove that resolution as is for one.
The only thing about it is when we don't have the readings, sometimes we change things along the line because the information comes in.
Normally for ordinances, yes. Resolutions usually are too simple, are much simpler than my experience. I know there's a bunch of resolutions and going through that whole emergency.
What's the advantage of, of doing it? Other than getting the-
I would say, I mean, it's a mild inconvenience to do the emergency voting. But I mean, there's no major, I would say.
I mean, when, when we do that, we take the opportunity away from our citizens to come in and address us. When you're putting it out there one time and they don't see it, or they see it and they think, okay, I've got time to get in there. We're taking that opportunity away from them and I don't like that, so.
I, I, from my interpretation, I am working within the ORC. I just want to point in front of you guys, see if we can make meetings go a little faster and like more efficiently. That's kind of my thought mostly, but if we want to keep it as is, I'm totally.
My personal vote would be to keep it as is.
Okay.
Everyone else can weigh in on that and I believe we should do that for our citizens to give them opportunity to come in here and address us if they have an issue with something that we're trying to pass.
Understood.
So, but that everyone else can speak their mind as well, so.
I mean, if we need it, we just.
Capital, right?
It is an emergency. I just, I'm just trying to switch it up a little bit, see if I can make things run more efficiently. Mild inconvenience, I understand.
We've never done it that way before.
Well, even a couple of weeks could sway my decision. You know what I mean?
I'm done.
It just, it really does, right? It just depends on the information presented.
And the, initially, there may not be enough information. Okay, okay.
I think we should.
Understood. I don't, I don't need to put it on the council push screen or anything.
I appreciate you looking into that.
Yeah, just, it kind of, it may bother me much, but it's just like, eh, we're just kind of doing emergency most of our resolutions anyways, so why not?
A lot of those really needed to happen right by.
Yeah.
Which is why we passed a necessary emergency. That's supposed to be happening quite often.
Well, yeah.
It's had a lot of pressing issues.
Exactly. So that leads us, I believe, to our probably most important one. I joke, okay. Dave, take your way.
So basically, I'm asking this body to consider repealing the prohibition against adult use cannabis dispensaries in Oklahoma. I think we're, we shot ourselves in the foot and we said, no. But there's a lot of tax money we have. I think the stigma that goes along with marijuana and its use is archaic and outdated. I don't see it as any different than having a drink. In a lot of cases, I see it to be a lot safer. But as far as, I'm not saying let's put one out by the school or let's put one downtown where we have a lot of space out by seventy-five where a dispensary could go in and those tax monies could really help us out. And even if we could pull in a couple cultivation farms, you're talking lots of water.
But how do we designate just an area and are, you know, are we talking vape shops in town and stuff like that? Or what are we talking?
No, we're, we're talking dispensaries. We could zone it for outside, towards seventy-five, zone an area out there where dispensaries could go. I'm not saying put one on Main Street right next to, you know.
Bubbles.
Right next to bubbles or put it in where Scarboroughs used to be, you know.
I'd be in favor if we do go forward with this, that any, anyone who wants to have that use in any district, we have to put the judicial use approval process and go through the board zoning appeals so they can look at it and judge whether that is appropriate. Obviously, also within the ORC to have contributions from them. But I'm assuming all cannabis cultivating companies, incidentally, right, would have to adhere to pretty strongly anyways. It's pretty, pretty stringent right now, so. But there wouldn't be any open principal use for that helping where, unless we wanted to get a whole district just for this. But I would recommend we do that, put it outside of town somewhere. Anyways, Dave, I'm sorry.
I just, I just think we're doing ourselves a huge disservice by letting, letting it go by.
What kind of revenue does it bring in for the, what would it bring in for the village?
Doing a little search, research on Monroe, Michigan.
Yeah.
I've watched videos on it and these, this guy, well, right now he's getting all of Ohio. Or was getting all of Ohio and, I mean, there, he was thinking, I think it was five hundred thousand and he was gonna get in taxes. And he got over a million and he's, he's like telling residents, please give me ideas what we could spend this money on, so.
They're getting roads and sidewalks. Just parks and park equipment and just think about that, Mason.
Your building?
Just doing a mystery somewhere in Monroe Township in Michigan.
Wait, build roads with cannabis?
Huh?
You can. So I, I've attached the draft ordinance for that at the back here and also attached twenty twenty-four dash oh three, which is the prohibition also.
Well, it would, it's a gateway drug.
No, it isn't, no.
It's not.
I'll vote no. I've done various. I've buried the kids.
You buried kids from smoking marijuana?
It's a, it's a gateway drug. It was for my daughter. She spent three years in prison, which, because she worked her way up to the back. I'm still half her face down.
I will just pitch in here and people kind of get, buries my mother from a drug overdose. Never smoked marijuana a day in her life.
I'll pitch in. I've got a family member who's smoked marijuana all their life and never, no, I shouldn't say all their life. Probably teenagers and never chose to go anywhere else.
I guess it boils down to it is know more of a gateway drug than alcohol. Anybody who wants, is searching for that, that escape from anything will find it with anything.
I do not disagree with that promise, but I will be a no.
I just liked everybody look at the medical side of it. Yes, you're right, no. It is a gateway drug off the street. Yes, you're right, no, it is a gateway drug off the street, because we don't know what people cut that stuff with. When you buy it out of a dispensary, it is regulated. I'd rather have the people in my jurisdiction smoking pot that comes out of a restricted place than out of somebody's trunk of their car that I don't know what they've cut it with, what they've added, because they add it because they want you to buy the more expensive stuff. And that's how, God bless them, the people who have gone from one marijuana to other drugs have probably gotten into the bad stuff that somebody had cut. And that's what, that's my forty years of law enforcement and EMS, you know, I've seen it over and over. It's not, if a person just grows in their backyard on their own, chances are they're not gonna go no place beyond drug pot. But when you start getting where they cut it, and that's what we're trying, the state's trying to avoid is, the THC is really down on this drug, it can't be as high. So, that's just my two cents, I think it's money in the bank.
Being unbiased, we're not trying to do one set or another, Bowling Green has two dispensaries, and that's a mild inconvenience for anyone who wants to go get some from, from a bowling alley. I might go up Finley, they might have some too. And obviously, if they're only on seventy-five to Michigan, they can get a lot more. Might get it cheaper too, because Ohio is still catching up with.
Well, they're on every block there, I got families.
Well, there's, if there's money to.
Well, you can regulate, you can, only one, like we can say.
I don't see why not, yeah.
Yeah.
We can visit up there.
We can say what, I'm sorry.
You can say there's only one.
Conditional using, but also be a limiting factor of sorts.
It's almo- it's almost like a, a liquor license, right?
Yes.
We can say then there's X amount of dispensary, yeah, dispensaries available.
Yeah, it's not like.
Because we're not. I hope we all have our eyes open to the sky, that it's happening anyway, but they're buying out of sketchy trunks, so.
Well, I do like the fact that you're saying out by seventy-five, because I, I would not be in favor of it being in town.
I would not.
And, you know, and I have no problem with people using it for medical, I, you know, that's, um, and it doesn't matter what I, whether I feel it's okay to use it for recreational, Ohio says it's okay, so, um, I, I, I do like the, the fact that you said out by seventy-five, you know, that, that, I'm going to hesitate about it, I'll be honest with you, I've gotta give this some thought, but, um, at least for, for me.
I know that I looked at it before.
Well, yes, it does.
And I, and I'm not for, I, I, I wish we went to one recreational, but.
But it's here, we have to.
I'm old enough to say we might take advantage of it.
Right.
Like we want our citizens.
We are recreating.
To drive to Bowling Green.
Yeah, we are, but.
Drive to Finley, drive, oh, and drive all the way to Monroe.
The only, the only thing I have a problem with, and like, I know that it's legal, but we have such a drug problem in this town, and it's just like.
Is it a marijuana problem?
Well, I, I'm just saying a drug problem, okay, so I'm not, and, and it doesn't matter because marijuana is legal, so it, it, it doesn't matter, my thoughts on that, that's, that's just where my head is.
Right.
You know, is that we have such a drug problem in this town now.
So, would it be a horrible thing if, if the meth problem we had turned into, everybody just went to the dispensary and, and we didn't have a meth problem anymore?
I do too, I sure got, because.
But you don't get, if you have somebody going to a dispensary, this thing, and it could be wrong, I could be totally blown aside with the question. They're going there for a reason, okay? If you go to a trunk of car, hey, you can have that, but.
Try this.
And once you try that, like, your life is crap. Like, i- it's crap for a pretty freaking long time.
Nineteen years for one hit of meth.
Yeah, like.
Studies have found nineteen years, you have that.
And those people like put stuff in pots.
It never goes away. Basically, I'll outlive my daughter.
Basically what they said, yeah.
We have them in the room, let's not waste them peanut gallery, pigeons.
As a citizen?
Um, it is legal, so why wouldn't we have the ability to have it here?
That's fine.
It doesn't bother me, I have friends that, prior to, I mean, I have an employer that completely changed their drug policy, and it's a very conservative company, that cannabis is treated like alcohol now, as long as you are not, and it's a very low number, as long as you're not over that when your work gets completely done. Never thought I would see that in my time working there, um, I think everyone's adapting, um, and if you look at it just like alcohol, I think that there's a lot of money to be made, so why wouldn't we do it?
Mason, do you have anything on it?
Yes, young one. Not really.
She's right at college, right?
It might be worth, you know, getting maybe the experience of other villages who have, like, looked at this, maybe put one dispensary in the area, maybe they have some more context or insight.
Well, that's, that's the problem, because Ohio's still in its infancy.
Yeah.
Right? So, and we've already just taken ourselves out of the game, we're like, no, we don't even wanna play. But if we give ourselves the opportunity, I think it'll benefit the village, plus you Monday, you have drunk this. No, just think about it, you know, like to pass it Tuesday as an emergency. No.
So are you building, is that what you're counting?
I, I cannot say I'm on council, I cannot do that until after, so.
You're at the block.
Yeah, I can light the block.
I would recommend not doing an emergency.
No, 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 but just, if you have reservations, I, I'm available, I would be happy to talk to any one of you guys about it. And I can speak more on the medical side of it than most. And yeah, I, I'd just like to, uh, put it up for three readings and then the opportunity to vote on it. And I just ask that you educate yourself, that's all. That's all. Throw away everything, if you know about it now, and just take the time and educate yourself, and see how it can benefit the village.
Right, our first reading next Tuesday.
Thank you for that. Let's see, any other questions on that topic? We are going to move on to number five.
Okay, so that is.
Just five?
Okay, so Civic Plus, we've been, we've had a, we've had a, we've had a 2022, we have three agreements with them actually, one's for our online code, one's for our agenda software, which is mostly for our clerk here, which will be trained on it, and then we'll terminate it, we'll look forward with either six thousand bucks a year or something like that, which we're not, we have not used since twenty twenty-two, a long time, to be honest. And the third one is a legal, we pay about two thousand bucks a year, uh, last time we passed it was twenty twenty-two, and I think we've just wasted four thousand bucks since then, because we didn't actually incorporate our revisions, our updating of our general offenses and traffic since that twenty twenty-two ordinance, which I might have forgot to put in here, but anyways. They provided both these ordinances, uh, I've not done any, any changes at all, I did give a copy to, uh, to Flafferty. Uh, basically, this is updates it to O R C, uh, which I know has been a problem, I've talked to officers, and basically, some of our, our code is so outdated, they don't know what to do with some of these situations that confuse them. So, this is the May twenty twenty-four, uh, revisions, uh, for pretty much all of chapter five, our general offenses, and all of chapter three, traffic. So this will be updating us to that point, and then, um, I think we'll have another one ready to go, probably, as soon as possible, we have to get this done before we get our twenty twenty-five, you know. So I'm, I'm going to actually go forward, I got the recommendation, as immediately, it's what they said, do an emergency for both of these, uh, next meeting, because we need to get our officers, well, get to understand and get that updating done, uh, with O R C. And I do have email, I have email. I forgot to put it in here, but, uh, basically, he stated, please get this done as soon as possible, so we can get an extra view in the works, as an attorney from Civic Plus, or paying, we've been paying money for this.
And on my, I didn't know anything about the thing that said that was for me, had no clue that this, we even had that.
Yeah, I did some digging to some, voices came across on my desk, and after just talking with Matt back and forth, we determined, hey, we're paying for all this software that we're not using, so I made a couple phone calls, a couple emails, and, um, here we are today. Some stuff still needs to be wrapped up, still, some stuff's understood, but I think we're in a much better place. Again, this is, uh, it was his predecessor and her predecessor, and then, like, her predecessor left, the agreements were still in place, we were done at the same time she left, you were, you were signed, and we've been paying all this money since, and I'm going to probably, if they don't like the agenda software, we're paying a lot of money for, and we're just gonna exit because I'm done, I'm cutting that, that drain of money, of resource, taxpayer money from the village. Okay.
On a codified ordinance, are, are ordinances, are they all updated in the books?
Um, so I, after the Juneteenth fireworks fiasco, I ended up sending the removal of, that was approved before me, to Civic Plus, along with the council meeting day change that was approved before me, Civic Plus, and I also added the actual prohibition of marijuana to Civic Plus, two more data on the code. I also got rid of American Legal Publishing, which was a redundant software, we used, it used since two thousand and one, probably stopped publishing, stopped, stopped using our code on the website, that was, that was updated in twenty twenty-two also. So, if someone Googles like Baltimore code, they only see UniCode, which is our most updated software, um, the updates, uh, that I just described won't be actually in the code until their next republishing. It is in, you can see them still, but they're just not in there yet, they do have a couple long signs. So, I, head is a backup of those three or, three or four ordinances, but they will be in our code, I'm sure. And note they were never sent to Civic Plus before.
Any other questions? That we have, Josh?
Thank you, Doc.
Of course.
No, I think that's, that's it, before we get to camp development, right? And I would like us to do the Dora first before I blow, blow the cats, we can get Mason out of here.
Okay, you want to, on economic development, you want to go down the Dora first?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Josh or, um, Dave, on personal, before we move on? All right, then we're gonna move on to economic development, let's go, Doc, and you're gonna go to Dora first.
Good, Bill?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so, a separate, separate thing.
Hey, he didn't, he didn't hit me, I'm really good.
So we've already talked about cannabis today, I want to introduce to, to council about drinking out in the public. So, I'm not sure how familiar council is with a Dora designated outdoor refreshment area, Bowling Green has them, I've partook myself in it many times, I did with my family. I have fourteen month olds, you can just walk down Main Street with a beer in your hand, it's green and all there at a time. So, but there are obviously stipulations, regulations, there's, you can only drink in certain areas.
Are we talking about permanent as opposed to just for the festival?
Uh, we can go both ways, we're very early on in this, we can do it just for festivals, we can do it, right now, it's, I have eleven to eleven, um, Monday through Saturday, correct, sir? I do have Mason working on this, uh, this is a fresh project I gave him actually.
I don't want to talk booze though, here.
Yes, so basically, uh, it's a way for, and right now, we only have Whistlestop, and we have Eagles, Eagles loyal, probably has, obviously, different hours, but they do have liquor permit we can use.
Why don't we do the bowling alley?
Well, the problem with the bowling alley is, uh, while it did initially include them, the Dora area, we decided, if you, you have, if you have a view of the actual map of the Dora, now it does not include them currently, but we can expand that down in the future if we need to, so it's, it's north of the railroad tracks. So, uh, this has been talked about with the festival committee that I've got, Mary's been part of, um, I'm gonna do my own research on Dora's, boring, now. But basically, uh, this would enable us to, mostly the Whistlestop now, but if we can do a beer tent, for example, on the park line across from Whistlestop, uh, with beers that are probably more of a craft variety, that Whistlestop does not sell, so we're not competing against them. We could have a lot of people to drink down the road, uh, have signs up everywhere, basically, saying you can't drink past this sign, and having an additional house for festivals anyways, so, um, signage is pretty key in all this. There's an application process, we have a draft application here and draft ordinance in front of you, uh, that you can look at, again, this, uh, we've got our eyes on this, we might have our first reading, if council wants to go forward with this on next Tuesday. Um, again, we can make this kind of, anywhere we want to appoint, so if you want to go to festivals, we'll go to festivals, uh, but I think this would maybe encourage additional businesses to come into town, additional restaurants, except with liquor licenses especially, uh, to help.
I know it helped in Finley.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, and even has the Bowling Green too.
Yes, I think.
I was just internally laughing.
I know you were.
Thanks.
It, it, it would, I mean, really, we gotta, we've gotta do something to make those buildings attractive.
It's, it's a great idea. I, I think it's a good idea, and obviously, this is not gonna fix our downtown by itself, but it's a, it's one part of many different aspects, and Mason, please take it away from there, if you have anything else, I forgot to share it too, I know you've worked on this way more than I have, and.
Uh, I think you've about covered it, um, I know another part of it is, this will probably kind of a slower moving thing, just because even, even if, you know, you guys wanna jump on this right away, I think the Department of Commerce, which kind of regulates the Doras, did you require like a good few things, that it has to sit for thirty days or so before, uh, you can even vote on it, so, it's definitely something that if you start now, you probably won't have until like later in the year, maybe September-ish area, so, just something to keep in mind, um, and other than that, yeah, I think we've covered most of it. There'll be like little cups and stuff that they have to use, but it's pretty well spied out, so.
So, yeah, explain it to me, so, um, I, I understand there are cups that you have, so do you buy it, and you have to buy it from like Whistlestop, or you can't bring your own?
So, yeah, I went to Juniper, uh, and they, I understand, and he just left me, uh, basically, the, the city sells the cups to businesses, businesses have already said, yes, I will, I will be part of the Dora, and if I go up to Juniper, for example, they're a company, I can say, give me this and a Dora cup, and thank you. This is part of my research, uh, so this, this is Toledo, and this is Bowling Green, and we have, we have North Baltimore on there, Whistlestop.
Was that empty when you got it?
I'm gonna see.
Oh, of course.
I'm gonna need to see the expect.
Water, actually. So, those are the cups.
Let me smell that.
So, uh, so you go to Juniper, you get a beer, and you can walk outside with it, you can walk down the streets, you can walk within the Dora district, uh, so. Much different with the bowling alley areas and bowling green where you can break your.
Any reason why we didn't include the bank parking lot across the street?
I actually have talked with them, uh, last week, actually, heard a couple things, one regarding overflow parking for employees, because we are running out of parking over here, uh, and two, regarding just that, uh, they are gonna get back with me, like the insurance company, about liability, uh, at the very least, we could, um, use their parking lot for like cornhole or whatever, and just not allow Dora cups into there, uh, maybe have a fence around that with signs, I don't know, we're still going to details, but, um, it sounds like, um, Craig is gonna partner with us as best they can, but then the, you know, liability issue.
Gotcha.
Okay. But at first, it wasn't included in that. And, Bill, do you like the shape of it, by the way?
Yes.
I, I would just like to make sure to get ten of them in there, because they would, they would be.
That was your initial thought, um.
Cause I mean, they'd be left out.
We would love to expand it in the future, I know we have to do a lot more thinking about, you know, electricity to possible vendors on that part of the Main Street, um, but if we, and how familiar are people with, not just the Dora, but like Black Swamp Festival and the Butterfly Nights and all that? I'm trying to use those same vendors also, but, I mean, not different days, obviously, but, uh, I'm trying to use those vendors, get, uh, increase our farmer's market, uh, if we wanna get down the road too, participation in that, but also, um, it's kind of a hobby based, what they're doing, why, why reinvent the wheel, they're doing something great over there, why not do something great here? That's already known to work.
Like when we had to go up summertime, and we had a beer tent, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, which is fine, like the people that did it, like the music boosters ended up with it and did it for years, and the fire department did it for years, but the Eagles couldn't benefit from that, and they're here all the time. So like that is going to like be a kindness to them, like hey, we realized, and anyone have to have a stupid beer tent, they could just.
Yeah, we just made these Whistle Stop and Eagles and if more places say, hey, there's demand over here, they'll.
You know what it also does for the Eagles? Because you know what people use to businesses that are open?
Their background.
Now, I do want to state that we have not really reached out much to Whistle Stop or Eagles yet, so I want to make sure everyone's aware of that, we still have to do that in due diligence.
Write that down, Mason.
Uh, we, actually, you know what, Mason, please set up meetings with both of us. I'm thinking about, we should just already.
Add a bowling alley.
I apologize to everyone, but.
I'm not leaving bowling alley out of the conversation.
Yeah, we will talk to them. Uh, it was, again, it was, in the original map, I mean, may include it again.
Why was it taken out?
Because they're just kind of far back there and because of electricity concerns on Main Street and because we're trying to make it small before we get too big. Not just the Dora, but also just the festivals themselves.
Well, might, if you push it all the way down to the alley there, I think Terry Queen and Mackinaleys, it might push Mackinaleys to go for a beer only, liquor license and that way they can start serving beer there.
And this is what festival committee has brought to me, they wanted this, so I adjusted it.
I thought of the Dora all the time.
And we can't, again, we can't do Dora all the time.
It's eleven to eleven all four year long, isn't it?
That was the original thought, I mean, we changed that, eleven to eleven simplicity.
I like, I like the thought of like if I'm having a drink and eating at the Whistle Stop and we want to go bowl, they put it in a Dora cup, I can walk down to the bowling alley with my cup.
If we want to push back on festival committee, I'm not sure of their exact reasoning, I was not there for this discussion to be exact, then I don't see them putting a much of a play. I mean, we could just say, expand it back to the original, which is basically alley by Mackinaleys.
Right, and that's not saying that you have to put anybody down, you don't have to put a vendor down or you don't have to. You're just giving that opportunity.
Right.
Our business, the same opportunity that every other of our businesses have.
Right, so if you want, I can reach back out to festival committee, the mayor is pretty much heading that right now and see if we can readjust.
One of my concerns with the festival, they had originally said they were going to go on both sides of the track. Is that still, they were going to expand it, it was going, the mayor had said it was going to go clear down to Water Street.
That was, that was the original idea.
Okay.
Well, Washington was.
I don't know if they're still doing that, or even in the future if they're going to do that, but my concern is that railroad track, and I think if we do something like that, that we barricade off so that there's one area that citizens can cross.
Believe it or not, that would be, we had good old summertime for.
Seventies.
Decades.
For decades. And we have never had a fatality there during the festival.
I understand, but we don't want one either, I'm just saying if we had a, you know, especially on Main Street, if we just had one designated area where they're crossing, rather than, you know, I just think that would be. If we're going to.
We shut that middle run money through Saturday. Well, at least CSX does play along and they'll usually come through pretty moderately as far as speed wise.
So we can also discuss quiet zone again, which I've done some research, I talked to someone through the Federal Railroad Commission, I haven't got that right a couple of weeks ago.
On having it quiet through town?
Yeah, the problem with that is it costs us about two million dollars.
Yep.
But if we want to.
You don't write that check.
There is funds out there for the ODNR, which I've not talked to Mason yet about, but we want to get to eventually. Obviously, this is not a very important thing, we've had no quiet zone for a long time, but it is on my radar to eventually apply for and see if we can get those. Because the, what the cost comes from is the increased traffic standards, the, I wish Josh Long was here to get that meeting. I didn't invite you, remember that?
No, she wasn't invited.
She's invited. But basically, basically, we have to have a lot more going on.
The signals would have to be updated.
Signal, we have to have arms.
And signals on sidewalks, you have the crossings on sidewalks, and they have to have sidewalks.
Everything, it's a whole thing. So we can look at that too, and obviously that one I think includes your concerns about pedestrian safety. But when we do this also, we also take the liability if anyone gets hurt on railroad tracks for that, that touch of road. It's, CSX is under our hands also, which is another thing, an important concern that you're raising. So eventually, when we do more research.
What are you talking about as far as liability on, what, explain?
So CSX relives its liability for any damage to cars or human deaf people going across the track.
To the no, the quiet zone, I understand, okay, thank you.
I know Tiffin did it about ten years ago and everything, like reading the papers, they still have it, they're pleased with it.
Yes, but again, two million dollars approximately, they lose consultants and it's a whole thing. You need to see if that's on board, but we're going to look, we're going to go back to it again once he died down a little bit more, he's more.
Well, what's the underpass or something?
Well, we can do that more too, and the feasibility of that.
There is no feasibility to that.
So anyways, sorry to interrupt you. So Mason, you are, any questions? You're on Dora, and it's good, Mason, you're allowed to leave.
Unless you want to do it on the cat discussion, siding stuff.
Okay, so we're going to, any other questions on the Dora?
Just one good suggestion, so, so sorry. We're going to go with a Dora, do we want a crosswalk from Whistle Stop to the parking lots?
Are we working on that?
I don't know, never heard of one, it doesn't exist.
I think Josh Long was working on a curb cut of sorts, or.
No, I said a crosswalk.
I, I agree with her, that's a good idea.
We're supposed to be putting in a handicap access.
Handicap access, yes, but how much of a crosswalk is possible due to how close CSX property is?
It would have to be in front of the guy's name, sorry.
We can talk about it tomorrow.
Still, you're going to go with the Dora, don't you want a crosswalk?
You're going to go.
Big chain line.
Yeah, but then we got to talk to those actually.
Sure.
Thanks, boys. Gone, that was a roller, no big deal. I mean, I, I all for the Dora thing, that's where I learned most of my Spanish. I get that.
Susan, I'm laughing.
China. I could take his door in the alley.
All right, we're going to move on here for the little cat.
Never got a response back, not yet at least, probably call them and sort of go back with them, but no, nothing else to share, I know council wants to see at least a water plate agreement. I'd say that would pretty much end more than five thousand bucks. I do have Mason actually looking at federal grants out there to use instead of our own taxpayer money, at least as supplementary to that, not that much, you might put in immediately. So being worked on, I guess we have to have a little more conversation.
Do we know what Finley's doing there, program that they've scrolled out?
I am not aware of Finley's program.
Yeah, they have a, they have a huge program they just started for payroll cats and something like. It's been in that courier and stuff.
Are they using, are they in partnership with a privacy with the?
Yeah, I believe so, I don't know the name of it, I'll have to go back to look.
We'll probably talk to them too, I mean, we had for the little cat, had Bowling Green come up. I know Bowling Green has partnered with them, and they did representation, we talked to them. We just are kind of in that favor of just going back and forth on what the agreement should look like.
Okay, I can, I'll see if I can find the name of it, call sound to it.
Sounds good.
I think the Courier has an article about.
Yeah, yeah.
Was that just today's paper?
It might have been today, it's, they've been talking about it a lot recently, they just started the program.
But I think it was probably similar to the presentation that was done here, people in Bowling Green.
Catch new disease.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, now let's move on to the Damon deal purchase.
Yes, so the last, you just put the whole packet over, that is the, what I got from Mr. Damon, from his lawyer. Basically, the total legal fees that he wants us to pay is one thousand three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, so there it is. And then on top of that, we would be paying the customary, the usual costs that a domain or property kind of includes outside of, I think we can probably waive the domain fee itself, which I think the county gives us, correct?
Yeah.
Can we waive invanancy property?
How many charges is that?
Call a tax, chances are you may have to.
Three percent of the purchase.
Even on government?
To be cautious.
Yes, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, so you're basically talking an extra two thousand dollars?
Uh, probably less than that, but yeah.
Okay, fifty grand or whatever.
Yeah.
It's well within your spending threshold.
Yes, it is, I don't think I need an agreement next Tuesday to amend, which is already approved, but. You want it for discussion, they asked to discuss, Bill?
That's exactly what I was asking for, thank you.
Great, yeah, I will reach out to Mr. Damon and I'll get this ball rolling.
Parts need to be in the loop in terms of, we need to pay a large sum of money, then we could do a supplemental appropriation.
That makes sense, that makes sense, we can add general fund then?
That's what we discussed last, I don't have it in front of me.
What about taking out a loan of sorts or using any of the money that's tied up, kind of tied up in our startup or anything like that?
I would use, I would recommend not taking out a loan for this because we have the money.
Good, okay. Tell us more tomorrow.
Yeah, we can talk about.
Sounds good.
I don't know what timeline, you know, we're not worried about two thousand dollars, we're worried about a larger sum.
So disconnected question, but it is about money. The building out across from Petrol that we rent out.
Yes.
Where's that lease, where is it? I mean, is it about to expire, are they going to?
I have the folder somewhere, it's at my, I have it in my.
Have they contacted us about extending that or anything?
I think it's unsafe.
Might be a cop.
Please, you're going to have to look through the folder in there.
I apologize, I have not done.
Well, I ask it off the top of the head, so.
I'll look into it, then turnkey agreements.
All right, does anyone else have any question on the Damon deal purchase? Josh, do you have anything to share with us?
Well, I need your request. Share, no, I think my, losing my voice, so if council has anything, questions.
Any questions for Josh?
Go to the community garden, get some net and see.
Community garden, I did, was there last Friday, they already have thoughts about expanding, they're really excited, got things going on. Water, were you using this in water speaking, the back that happened there, we do have a key to that now. Obviously, we're going to get the cameras most likely for additional security. But yeah, everything's going well, I'll put that.
Any questions for Josh?
Eric, the building I asked about, the lease, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yep.
All right, Matt?
I wish Phil was still here.
He might be in, you weren't there with me.
He'll be all right without me here, just might make him smile a little bit. But we were working hard with Eagleville, I don't know where we're at, but keeping council informed, we were telling you the plan, I came to agreement with them. I really was like, as much as we went back and forth, it was like, was not going to like celebrate till, I had to check in the bank, so we received the check and it's in the bank, so kind of put the final chapter on that one. That was for the second, third quarter of two thousand twenty-four, that check was for thirty thousand, so we should be done hopefully talking about all of that.
Now, is that the last one, are they going off of our network?
Yeah, they're, they're on their own.
Yeah.
We did take some runs in the fourth quarter of two thousand twenty-four, but it's all mutual now, but. I know when, when I told Phil, they received the check, we ran it to the bank, and we all kind of smiled and fist bumped because it was, it was a little bit of a challenge. April and I, we've interviewed several candidates for the open utility clerk position. We had one impressed with the most and I've been staying in touch with the candidate. I'd like to bring the, bring that candidate to, for approval on the next council meeting, next Tuesday. They, it sounds like they can start the fourteenth, but I need to confirm that, but it's all subject to council's approval.
Anyone have the name?
Yeah, probably not, that's right now until, be close to the day we have, I'm actually, we actually offered it to you.
Through an email today, and I don't think you heard me, she emailed back when I emailed, but emailed back just like a couple hours ago, like essentially accepting, but it all comes upon council approval, so.
All right, well, we look forward to that information.
And we're really tickled to have both Jacob and.
And Mason.
And in place.
You know, the question you kind of might ask is, where's your job?
Liv currently lives in Finley, we interviewed three from North Baltimore, but she definitely was the star. And I, I used to, well, April's too, and that's one thing, anything I ever talked about with April, in fact, not like, what do you think, I already know what I think, so, and she was, we're going to work with all of us, but it's going to work directly with April more, so for me, that was important, but the best candidate, so.
Is there anything else you need to address? Any questions for Matt?
Oh, you had your turn.
I have one more thing. I'm going to transition all of our emails to .gov, it's a free domain, we can apply for it through the federal government. That's the reason why we aren't getting business cards yet, it's a process, I'm working with Intechon, Panda, and Meadlink. Basically, we have a .org website, we have a .net email, and overall it looks a professional. I'll arrange it to a free .gov, go to paper.net for a little while, just so we get that transition, but it should only cost us a few hundred bucks, I think, to just kind of give, for Intech's assistance, basically, with some technical stuff, so look forward to that, hopefully sooner rather than later, but I have to apply for it and all that, but I think the simple thing we can be doing that, okay, makes us all look a lot more professional, and again, that is the whole issue of .net, .org, .gov, all of the .gov. Yeah.
Perception is plenty of perception.
Yeah.
It's both the health protection, so.
Oh, and having .gov email also allows us to send an email and not get caught up in some of the spam. And also from additional securities, so it's like a free thing we should be doing.
Perfect. Well, a note to you both, carried a lot of water this, you brought a lot of stuff, thank you. I mean, this, this was hard work for the shows.
All right, no one else is here, so no information from him. I do want to thank Eric Swett for being here, and if you'll remember, he was here back when we had another vacant seat that they built, so we do have to fill Mike's vacant seat. Eric, I don't know if you have any questions for us, or if council has any for you, but.
Yeah, maybe after I shared some opinions, but no, yeah, if you guys have any, you know, questions for me, I'm very interested, so.
And that's still the end of his term, right, so very happy?
Yeah. The other ones don't take this long, usually we just get a lot of talk.
Yeah, the other ones I've been to have not been this lit, there's more nearly, so thank you for that. Those chairs look a little more comfortable than these chairs for me.
I can do this every single month if you, if council wanted me to, this is me holding back, this is me holding back.
When's the contract up?
Josh? Next week.
If you guys have anything for council meeting on Tuesday, I need it by Friday.
Okay, well, I guess I need to ask council, do we, do we have any other candidates that we want to interview or anything for, to fill the seat, or, you know, we're not required to advertise it, so.
I don't know of any, and I tell you, I mean, when we brought on Dave, I was one of the toughest positions.
So, okay, just wanted to ask that, I would like that put on next week's agenda, please.
Sorry, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Anything frighten you, huh?
No.
Cat.
No, nope.
Dora.
Cannabis, Dora, Dora, and what else are we going to talk about?
Cannabis, Dora, Dora, and what else are we going to talk about?
Somebody talked about shooting people with paintballs, I was a little hesitant there.
Yeah, that was a little weird than usual.
Yeah, that was a little much. Uh, S W E A T.
So we defi guys you Paula and you go through the paintball gun and you just secure our park.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, if you'll be able to attend next week.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, then this meeting is adjourned.